Call the city council work session order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Amy. Lamore. Felder. Hader. Brave. Vining.
Mayor Clark.
Present. So we have our. You can carry it. So we're here for a work session. We have a couple of items on the agenda, but I think also, Manager Robinson, you kind of an update on the items that we're going to present this evening, correct?
Yes, Chair. And Council, we received notification last night that the original presentation by the Monroe County Convention and Tourism and Visitors Bureau, that there was a family emergency and they had to cancel this tonight. We've rescheduled that for November 18th. But in lieu of that, we are going to bring forward the, the ALCC, not ALCC project that we can discuss, but that'll be after we hear from both the YMCA and MCOP on their summer programs update and their review. And after that, we will go into the other, the other topic in relating to the item on the agenda in the, in the approval of the guaranteed maximum price for the opportunity center and the VAR library.
Yep. Very good. So we're going to start with Mark. I see Mr. Cochran.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. This evening, as City Manager indicated, summer sure did fly by this year. And as we do every year, since we began our formal partnerships with Monroe County Opportunity Program and the YMCA for our community recreation programs, we wanted to come and present to City Council an update on the outcomes and the flurry of activities that took place all across the city this summer. And so first, we'll have Stephanie Casperzak come up and talk about our partnership with them, both at the Opportunity Center and Labor Park, but also with the Tot Lot program.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Thank you so much for having me to talk about this really great subject. I always said that I wanted to retire and be a summer camp counselor, so I get to live through that at the Opportunity Center every, each and every summer since we've been there. So we had an amazing time this summer with a lot of great activities. As you know, we provide summer camp just about when the kids get out of school, all the way through mid-August. And we take that opportunity to really have kids explore different opportunities in, during different weeks. And so you can see here, it's probably hard for you to read, but we always start off our summer camp with Kidpreneur Camp, which brings in local and regional young people who are entrepreneurs to talk to kids about what it means to start a small business. And so they see all of these kids, whether it's selling lemonade, we have a woman who comes in to make balloons, just lots of fun stuff, and kids actually learn how to start their own business. And then a few weeks after that, we have digital literacy camp where the kids think about what their business would be, and then they get to make a logo and a T-shirt to go along with that business. So everything that we do has an educational focus, as you'll see as I talk about our different summer camp topics. But starting a small business and the tech, digital literacy and technology camp both have really key aspects for kids. So we want to make sure that they have those opportunities to learn. We do health and fitness camp because we want to make sure that kids are eating healthy, having access to fresh and healthy food, but also learning the importance of physical activity to their everyday health. We had this year a really, really great opportunity to bring our world champion boxer Rico Hoy back into town for a four-week intensive boxing camp, which was hugely popular. We had 38 participants in our boxing camp just for the summer. 26 regular youth participated in weekly summer day camp activities, but those are unduplicated kids. So usually they came back each and every week because we had so much fun. We have Discover Monroe, and as you know, they're with Discover Monroe. They usually come to City Hall here, but also go to a lot of wonderful places across Monroe, just to shed light on the great opportunities that kids have here. We have Art with Amy. You guys are well aware of Amy Arnold and the wonderful work she does with us. And she comes for summer camp this week during, one week during the camp. And this year, she took the kids to the Port of Monroe. They had an artist come out and draw the tugboat, and so all the kids got to paint the tugboat out at the port. Super cool. I talked about digital literacy camp. We have Young Authors Camp, which we've been doing three years now, where we bring in an author every day to not only read their book, but the kids each get those books every day to take home with them. So they're reading, they're learning how to write books. This year, Latonya brought a book kit. So each, each child who participated in camp actually got to write a book and go through the different phases of writing a book. So by the end, they had their own that they could take home with them. And then one that's not on here that I wanted to talk about, we added confidence camp. As you know, we do a lot of girls and boys mentoring. So we rounded out our summer camp series with confidence camp, which really talked to young people, both boys and girls, about being self-confident. You know, we talked about volunteering in the community and the value of community service. We actually picked up trash in the neighborhood as a beautification project. So just different things to build confidence in them as, as young, young people. So great time with summer camp, always fun to watch the kids each and every day getting out there to have fun. Thank you so much for the amazing partnership with Tot Lot. We had six locations again this year. We've been switching it up as we go. We had 211 unduplicated kids, 1,272 total kids across those five weeks. We started a little early and ended a little early because a lot of the kids were going on the HBCU trip. So you can see our six locations here. Just wanted to make note, it says Boyd Park up there, where actually we were at Father Carnes Park this year and not Boyd. But Tot Lot was a lot of fun. We usually have two summer youth employees at each Tot Lot location. So we had 22 youth who were employed throughout this summer. They're ages 14 to 20. And they work with the kids, they design different activities, and really become mentors for the young kids who are at our Tot Lot locations. One of the cool things that we do in the very first week with our summer youth employees is we had Huntington Bank come in and do financial literacy with them. I learned with my daughter going through college, they did financial literacy with her, and it was very helpful to set the tone for her future dealing with her, her money matters. And so we started that with our summer youth employees too, because some of them simply don't have a bank account to cash that first check. And we want to make sure that not only can they do that, but also have some tips as they become young adults. So that's been very popular as well. As you guys know, we took a trip to Atlanta to visit historically black colleges and universities. We went to Spelman and Morehouse. We had seven chaperones and 22 youth who went on that trip, which was July 23rd to 26th. You guys heard all about that, so I won't talk any bit anymore about that. But we did have a delegation from Ho Fu Japan come in on August 6th. And so we did Art with Amy, there was a food demonstration, and they got to eat lunch at the Opportunity Center. So that was really a great experience as well. Then there's our summer outdoor activities. So we had an outdoor movie night, the first day that the kids were out of school. So it's a really wonderful time for families to get together. We have some popcorn and we show a movie in the park. We had our Juneteenth celebration and our first annual Center Impact Awards on the 15th of June, and then our End of Summer Bash, which is hugely popular with hundreds of participants. And that's all from our, do you guys have any questions? I know just about every one of you have come out to one event or another. We just had our Faith in Blue event, which was a wonderful success as well. So we just keep doing great things, and we appreciate the partnership with you guys so much.
Well, thanks Stephanie for all the work, but also all the staff and everybody's participant for being here to present for, obviously us here and those that may be watching. But any questions from the council members? Michelle.
How do you always have nice weather?
We will it to be. We will it to be. That's my only answer. We do seem to have really great weather.
Let's make comment on our sister city from Ho Fu Japan. After we were there, we went for ice cream, and they were talking about the center. They enjoyed the fact that they left something behind, the artwork they did with Amy Arnold. And of course, in the, in their rock garden, their little message that they left behind, both in English and in Japanese. I thought that was great. Actually, we have a couple students from years past. I think here about a week from now, there'll be three that'll be here in town.
Oh, really? I didn't know that.
Our, our young adults in college, and it'll be interesting to see them.
Very cool. Very cool. Thank you. I think Kristen, you're up next.
No introduction needed.
Yeah, here I am. Good evening, you all. Thanks for having me. I have a bit of a head cold, and I know I'm going to be hard to listen to because I can barely stand hearing myself right now. So thanks for having us. Stephanie, Erin, thank you for your partnership. They do great things in the community, and I think we complement each other well. And the events that she had, we're able to tag on some of those too. So thanks for having us. Appreciate it. We're in year three of this collaboration with the city, and I think year three went better than years one and two. It was a huge success. So thankful for your partnership and the collaboration. We gained participants in every, every event that we offered. I do have to thank Amy Mason. She once again was wonderful. We cross-promoted a bunch of events with the City Parks and Rec, and it was amazing. And I say it every year, Brad and the Parks Crew, they're second to none. I, they do everything we ask. Just, they're just amazing crew, and I think Hawk and Jay wouldn't agree. Hawk and Jay are the faces of our program out at the park. They're there every, every night. Hawk is our community recreation director, and Jay's our Y and the Fly mobile sports director. I'm thankful for them. I think they add a lot of value to the program because they are there for every, every need anybody wants, any coach, any kids. They're always there, so I really thank you too. They're the ones who create value in the program, so I want to publicly thank you. Volunteer coaches, they did an amazing job. We had a ton of volunteers. And the feedback that we've gotten is that our service to the kids and families is really good, so I feel good about that. Youth, oh, this is hard to read. Youth Ball, the youth program's at Munson. This is our flagship program. As you can see, we just, we killed the numbers again in 2024, so much so, we're asking Mark, he knew I was going to say this. We need more ball fields at the park. So as part of maybe the master plan, or you know, we can get some more ball fields at the park. We're out, we've outgrown it. We've, you know, what really helped when we joined with the city league, the Dundee Youth Ball, we have French Town, Custer joined last year, which was huge. And they actually, I do have to, I mean, they let us use their fields quite a bit. So we need to be thanking Custer because they, we, there was a lot of times where two Monroe teams were playing at Custer, at Custer Field. The, I see chat over here. Thank you to the, to your department for your support. They sponsored a ton of teams, and then they were there for the All-Star Night. All-Star Night was a huge success. We say we probably had, I don't know, 1,500 people, we're not really sure. But a lot of you guys came out, so thanks for coming and supporting our All-Star Night. It didn't rain this year. Mayor Clark threw the first pitch to, was it Jody's daughter? That was pretty cool. We had a good sound system this year. Everything went really well. So we're very excited about Youth Ball. And then Fall, Fall T-Ball, that, that was just 342 kids this fall. We're just finishing that up, I believe, is tomorrow. Tomorrow's our last game. We added older kids this year at the request of some parents, and that, we didn't think it would go. And it, because fall's usually a really busy time for other sports, and it, it went well. It's busy. So I love, I love that Munson is so busy with, with Ball. Other programs at Munson, summer tennis, we had, we held steady in summer tennis. Each kid got a free racket to take home. And then our Tiny Tacklers Football. Has, oh, and also in the slides, we added volunteers and spectators, and that was, the spectators are estimated. Adult softball leagues, we thought this was kind of a dying breed, and it's not. It has, it's amazing. 700 participants in spring, 640 in summer, and 420 in fall. Donnie Jones is the face of this. He's been with the city for a long time. He's, he's a really good guy, and he does a good job. And when he can't be there, either Hawk and Jay are covering. And at Munson, we're running the concession stand still. I think I talked about that last year. We have license to serve hot food. Andrew Heiserling, Jay's wife, does a really good job with that. She stocks it, staffs it, trains people. We don't, we don't make money on that. It's, it's a service to the community, but they seem to really like it. So, and Brad does a really good job with that too. He fixed some plumbing last year and painted the ceiling. So we're really appreciative to the park crew. Summer Fitness Series at St. Mary's. This is how this partnership started with the city. This started three years ago, I believe. And we're holding strong with that. I believe we did cardio drumming and yoga at the park last summer. And then adult sand volleyball, we tried to start last year, and it didn't, it didn't go. And this year, we ran two sessions of adult volleyball, and it, people really seemed to like it, so we were happy with that. And our adaptive programs. We, we have a special place in our heart for adaptive programs. We love them. We ran summer T-ball this year and are in the middle of fall soccer. And we also plan to run swimming at the Y and adaptive basketball, and those are all free to the community. And we feel really good about that. And that's all I have. Short and sweet. Does anybody have any? Oh, I will say, Carnes Park has been amazing. We ran Y and the Fly pickleball there. Was it Monday nights, Jay? Monday, Monday during the day. And we average about 20 kids there on Monday during the day. So we really are excited to utilize Carnes Park. We also utilized it for our Corporate Cup pickleball. We had a bunch of good feedback. People love that park. And Hawk plays out there all the time, and he can never get a court. So, so it's been really good, and we're hoping to program some adult stuff if Mark lets us, and some more youth programming next year. But Carnes is, was a, it's a really good park, so good job.
Thank you. I think it's a great partnership. I think it just showed over the years how it continues to grow. So my thanks, and of course, the council. I'll see if there's any questions from council members. See any, so all is good. Thank you so much. Thank you both. Mark?
Okay, and I'm going to wrap, wrap up the presentation to discuss the programs that the city put on ourselves. So to touch on Father Carnes Park, one of the goals the city council had this year was to make sure that we were programming special events at Carnes Park too, now that it was open. In addition to having Tot Lot there, as well as the dip in the toe activities that the YMCA had there, next year, we are looking at more. This year, we wanted to kind of test out the waters, see how it was going to be utilized before we got too hot and heavy into scheduling anything with any of our partners or with the city. But it's certainly one more facility that we hope to have more active use in, organized and unorganized, leading into next year. But this year was another busy year at St. Mary's Park with the Summer Concert Series. We actually were able to get in our 14 concerts this year. If you remember, last year, we had to cancel Killer Flamingos twice, and then ended up not being able to reschedule on the third time. So this year, thanks to Amy Basin and all of our Parks Crews for their hard work, we were able to have 14 concerts, averaging about 41,000 total attendees over the course of the summer. That also included the Finally Fridays in Altrusa Park. You remember, that was a new program we started last year, utilizing the Pocket Riverfront Park downtown. More to capitalize on the social district, capturing the after-work crowd on Fridays, give them an opportunity to grab a beverage, enjoy a small concert along the park before they went on with their weekend. And this year, we had a full schedule at least once a month in Altrusa Park as well. And so the Concert Series presented by Monroe Community Credit Union, they were our presenting sponsor once again this year, but also wanted to thank all of our other sponsorships. And Amy Mason has done a tremendous job in getting the sponsorship program moved up. If you recall, I think it was two years ago, we had about $3,000 in sponsorship for our programs. Amy Mason, through her outreach and leadership and revising the program, this year, we had over $20,000, which covered the cost of all of our concerts this year. So like to thank all of our sponsors. You'll see them all on the screen. And each, each week, they were highlighted and represented and appreciated, both in the Concert Series, but also through our social media, listed on the flyers as well. And it's with their support that we were able to have such a great season downtown along the river as well. Some of them, of course, were hotter than others, but as well as adding food trucks again for the second year in a row at each of the concerts, having food trucks that people could enjoy in addition to all the downtown restaurants in the social district being open for all the Summer Concert Series. But in addition to the concerts, wanted to highlight some other programs that Amy and our park staff both oversee and prepare for. The summer dance parties, these were held on the courts at St. Mary's Park. We had about 569 participants. And then, of course, even throughout the wintertime, the events that we have, when things slow down just a little bit as the weather turns colder, with the daddy-daughter dance and mom's, mother-son bowling. But also the line dancing events that we had promote on social media. And then recently, the Bark in the Park, which is always a fun event when people bring their dogs all dressed up, thanks to support and partnership with Scallywags and other sponsors with that as well. But also getting the word out about some of the independent recreation opportunities we have, like the scavenger hunts. If you haven't seen these, Amy Mason developed a scavenger hunt, encouraging families to get out in all of our parks. There's a page that you can download and find certain items that are all across all 36 parks across the city. And if they turn in their scavenger hunt page, they're entered for a prize. And so it's always fun to have the kids come up, turn in their sheet, and collect their prize, knowing that they've visited most of our parks, at least throughout the summertime. Garden plot rentals, the community gardens out at Munson Park, we had all 22 rented again this year. And then the fantastic Family Movie Night and the Outdoor Movie Night that we had at St. Mary's Park. You recall the Outdoor Movie Night at St. Mary's Park is more tiered, promoted as a date night or an old, an adult event to come and watch. I can't remember what the name of this year's movie was with Jennifer Lopez, but always a nice event. I can't remember what the name of this year's movie was with Jennifer Lopez, but always a nice event when you can visit the social district with that as well. So, you know, I, I hope that the council and the public all take advantage of all of these opportunities. That we, we try and focus on all of our parks all throughout the summertime. But another program I wanted to mention was Mesa, the Monroe Area Soccer Association. And all the work that they do to host our community soccer league out at Munson Park. They run that pretty much by themselves. We prepare the fields with them and support. They do a lot themselves. But we've enjoyed, over the past two years, with the change in some of their leadership, a great partnership in terms of what are their facility needs as we're thinking for future capital improvements, but also their numbers going up. And so certainly their fall season is in full swing right now. And in addition to all of these activities, it was important for us, we have great facilities. And so as Kristen indicated, it's great to see them being utilized. And so in between all of these community opportunities, we did open up Munson Park for tournaments starting last year, where outside tournaments can come in and rent our facilities. We do charge them for that because they're collecting fees and it's not just City of Monroe or community residents using it. But the largest one happened over the weekend, in case you didn't drive by Munson, there were thousands of people at Munson again for the WASA tournament. This is a tournament that's organized by an organizer out of Northville, I believe, and brings thousands of people in from all over southeast Michigan and northwest Ohio for this program. And I, with this year, with the event being both on Saturday and Sunday, with the support of the Public Safety Department, traffic was a lot better. Traffic flow, parking went a lot better than in years past. And chatting with Brad today, the event was really good and brought in a lot of people. And we're working with them in the future on how we can promote community establishments. So the folks that are coming into Monroe, actually in partnership with the Tourism Bureau, how we can promote local, local places for them to visit while they're here or when they come back in the future. So we want to thank council for their support, both for all of the partnerships with the YMCA and MCOP and all of the folks who, who use our facilities, but also your support in keeping up the facilities as well and the staffing that helped make all of these events possible.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions or comments for Mark? I'll tell you, over the weekend, I was, morning I was out of town and Saturday came driving in from a visit, personal visit. And I thought, man, there's a lot of traffic. And then I went past Public House and saw, I know what's going on this weekend. And then as I talked to them on Sunday, I think every, every restaurant in town was completely full and waiting, which is great. And then they said that Sat, that Saturday, that was one of their busiest days ever and, you know, trying to get in. So I think there's, there's much to offer besides the fields, of course, is the activities and that's wonderful to see. Good partnership. I don't see any comments or questions. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Manager Robinson?
Yes, Your Honor and Council, for this next one, you know, we had the vacancy and realizing that this is a topic that's of utmost importance to, to our city, is something we've been working on for, for many years. We'd like to bring up and talk to you about the, we did receive the guaranteed maximum price for the opportunity in Navar Library Project. It was forwarded in your packet and I'd like, and here comes Patrick Lewis to be part of the presentation and to walk us through this. Good timing, Patrick.
We were watching in my office. Better shut off the YouTube though, because you're hearing it now. I just realized you do not have a jumper for the HDMI. Does anybody? Guess I'm going back to my office. One moment, please.
Sure. Yes, while Mr. Lewis gets what he needs to present this, I'll just, I'll just ask, and all the managers usually ask at the end. Is there any items on the agenda that council members may want to have further discussion after we go through this presentation, any particular one? If not, if you think about it, if we, as we have time, we can review it. He's back.
Okay. It's not coming up on my screen. That is my, I know, it's not coming up on, my screen's not coming up on yours. Any advice? There we go. There we go. Thank you much, Mr. Cochran. I'm sure that setting my cat probably changed when they walked across my screen the last time at home. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council, Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering and Public Services. We're going to just step you through tonight, a few of the elements of the guaranteed maximum price award that we're putting in front of you for tonight's regular meeting. I would be remiss if I didn't at least start out by introducing the project team. And we were back in my office strategizing before we started here. From AUC Construction, Aaron St. Dennis and Jeremy Hankins. They are the project director and project, project director and project manager. And then we have Keith Kohler here from Kohler Architects. Am I missing anybody else? Guess not. Okay. So those of you that were on council back when we did the fire station project, no, this is a very similar process. And I'll step you through a few things. I don't know how well we can see that. Probably not very. So what you, what we're asking for you to approve tonight in the regular meeting is a guaranteed maximum price. And that guaranteed maximum price includes all the subcontractor trade bids, as well as some general conditions and some other things in here. And I've kind of got those broken down, or I should say, AUC has those broken down. We'll kind of go off, off the second column there where it talks about the trade contractors. As you can see, we break, it breaks it into the normal building trades, like building demolition, footings, concrete, flatwork, masonry, structural steel, et cetera. Those bids were received on October 8th here at City Hall. They were received from AUC and City Hall, and then we opened them here in the council chambers. And in general, with one exception, the award was, was, is going to be made following approval tonight, if it's granted by AUC, to those subcontractors. And that's a little different contracting form than we typically would undertake, where I would solicit bids from contractors and then I would present them and they, they would enter into a contract with the city council. In this case, AUC is serving as our construction manager. So the contract for the individual subcontract trades will be with AUC. So you, our point of approval is just tonight by approving this guaranteed maximum price. So if you go down here to the, to this kind of subtotal here, that is the total of the trade bids. And so those trade bid costs are 3 million, 6,308,256.44. There was one alternate bid that was in there. I know you can't see that super well either, so I'll try to blow this up a little further. There's an alternate bid for some window replacements that we were able to fit into the budget. And so that, in this column right here, that's another 37,692, and that will be with Glasgow. That's our glass vendor. So that was an alternate that was awarded with the bid. The one bid, the one low bidder that was not accepted, didn't meet the specifications. So we ended up awarding, or AUC will end up awarding their subcontract to the second low bidder, and that was Steelgrave Turner Electric. So the second low bidder is actually a City of Monroe contractor. So actually, it kind of worked out on that one, that if we didn't have our low, was able to meet the, meet the specifications, that we would get someone adequate, certainly more than adequate to replace them. So in addition to the subcontractor bids, which represent about 6.34 million dollars, we have some other items that are factored into that GMP. So reading down there, there's a staff general conditions line item there, and that's 547,000. And I don't know if Aaron and Jeremy would want to elaborate at all on what that is, but those are all the things that AUC will be performing just as a general contractor would. So those are things like security for the site, temporary light, you know, temporary power and things like that, security. All those things that none of the individual trade contracts include. So, and that's, that's pretty common. That number's pretty close. It's similar in scope to what we had on the fire station project. And then there's reimbursable general conditions and, and those are, I won't bore you with all the intricate details with what those are, but those are things that, again, that go with your general contracts. There's a construction contingency on here. And when we get to the overall budget, I wanted to just highlight this so that you know that we do have quite a bit of safety built in here. That's almost a $400,000 contingency. And that is for things that we don't know that might come up. With any type of construction, there's always things that are not necessarily missed in the drawings, but things that couldn't have been known. We feel a little bit better about a project like this because you, you are not dealing with as much underground. And that's usually where you come and, come across a lot of contingency, like if you found an underground storage tank or a foundation. With the fire station project we did six years ago, that was what we found, some building foundations and things like that. Here, you're working with a little bit different set of unknowns, and that is, what if we, there's a lot of interplay between the library portion and the ALCC side. So if you take a wall apart and you find something in there, or something's hollow that it shouldn't have been, or things like that. So those are the types of, of activities that you would have on your contingency. So. But I did want to point out the sheer number on that, because when we get back to the project budget, that'll be important with the fact sheet. Couple other things in there here that are allowances, $20,000 for utility permits. Those would be franchise utilities like DTE, Michigan Gas. And $60,000 for the City of Monroe building permit fees. And the reason we include those in the project is that the building department, the building safety fund is an enterprise fund. And so it's expected to pay its own way, so to speak. So if our building staff is doing inspections, that should come across the project budget. There is a construction manager fee, that's 196,000. And of course, that represents similar to what you would have with the construction contract. That's their fee for all of the other things that they do, the administrative services, the, you know, review of shop drawings, coordination of construction. So that's, that's a fee. That's effectively, that's a flat fee based on a percentage of construction. And then you have other, your things like your insurance, builder's risk, performance bond, and those are things that go with any type of construction contract. So when you wrap it all together, put that, put that all in a bow, that, the contract we're asking the council to approve tonight with AUC Construction would be a guaranteed maximum price of 7,951,010. So that's, that's the formal approval that goes with tonight. Now, one of the other things that we want to make sure that we include is that there are other costs that are outside that GMP. So I want to discuss briefly what those are. And again, these are not things that we're asking you to approve tonight, but they're things we want to point out to you. So the top paragraph, if you will, I don't know if you can structure a table in paragraphs, but the top half is the construction related expenses. And you'll notice that number is the same as I just read off to you on the GMP. And so those are the things that are wrapped into that. The additional fees by the city are things that you either have approved already, will, or will approve, or we think we might need to have them in there. And, and again, I'm going to point out some of the areas where we've got some play. Architect and engineering fees, we are already on the hook for 723,405, and that represents the, our primary design contract with Kohler Architects. But also some pre-construction activities we've had with AUC, which is around $20,000, and then about $5,600 in survey, topographic survey for the site. So those are costs that are already approved by council and are encumbered. Not necessarily spent, because Kohler will continue to advise us during the construction process, even though AUC is our, is our general contractor. We threw another $25,000 in there, not because we expect to spend it, or not because there's anything else that needs to be included, but just in case something comes up. There's, there's always a chance that we may need to redesign something in the field, something just flat out doesn't work. So we want to leave a little bit of money set aside for that. Technology and voice data, that is outside the contract. Like with the fire station project, we'll secure our own low voltage contractor to, to take care of that work. That's nothing critical, but it's typically something that the city will do. We had hazardous abatement, $50,000 was set aside. I can report to you, that's a positive development. Our building official was able to get an abatement contractor to do the work for $5,000, not $50,000. So we, we carried that placeholder through there just in case something else pops up that we weren't aware of. But we do believe we're going to be substantially under that allocation. Furniture fixtures and equipment, FFNE is what they call it in the building trades. AUC's original estimate for this, based on their experience in other projects, was about $350,000. I know Mr. Cochran's office has already received bids on that one and we're a little bit over 250. Current pricing, we, because those are late items though, we may not purchase those until June or July. So there is a chance that those numbers will go up. But again, we don't think it's going to be 350, but we're carrying through 350 just to give you an upper end of what this could be. Testing allowance, $100,000. We haven't secured that yet, but there's any number of materials testing that needs to occur. I can tell you, on the fire station project, it was less than half this. So we think it's not going to come in at 100, but again, leaving that set aside. If the budget allows it, we're going to charge, like for example, my time, my staff's time to coordinate, attend progress meetings and things like that. We typically will do that. If it's, if the budget allows that, we've set up a $20,000 item for that. As well as $75,000 as a whatever, things that we don't know, we don't know. But again, something we set up to protect the job. If you put all those in together, we come up with a total expected project cost of 9.42 million roughly. And in the fact sheet, I pointed out where we've, between the 7.8 million dollar state allocation and the money that the council has set aside and re-appropriated in previous motions from other capital projects. If everything on this list goes 100% wrong, and we spend every dollar on this list, we would still need $170,000 from the capital projects fund to balance it. As I've just pointed out to you, there's a number of places we already know we're under, even though the job hasn't started. So we are very confident that you've already appropriated the money that we need to build this project. And we're very confident in AUC's ability to deliver this project successfully. And I'll let, I'll let Aaron mention it, but he'll probably tell you, I'll steal a little bit of this thunder and say, Aaron's not in the business of spending all the money that we give him. His goal is to return money back, leave money in the job. But these are allocations set aside here to cover the normal things that come up. So. Mr. Cochran, have I missed anything germane to the discussion at this point? The only other thing I wanted to add, I just thought of one, was on the subcontractor bids, I reported on the fact sheet. I've got a list of them here. I, I won't bore you with all those, but we have, we have screened those. And as you, at the last meeting, when we had approval for AUC's, for their, for their contract form or their pre-construction services, I did mention that we needed some flexibility on the responsible bidder ordinance because of the way this was being constructed. Normally, our ordinance would require us to screen all the trades before bidding. Given the large number of trade packages here, we thought that was impractical. So what we did was we, we put that out there and said, if you are low and you're being considered, you will have to submit your information at that time. And so I spent a whirlwind of screening the better part of two days last week. I'm happy to report that we basically, of the 18 trades in there, we had two that were under the $50,000 threshold, because we did treat them all as subcontractors. So we use the lower threshold. We did grant waivers to three of them. In, in two cases, they were the only bidder. And one of them was an elevator company. So that's a $99,000 subcontract, and it's very specialized work. I'll pull up the chart here so you can actually see what they all were. So I don't forget any. Okay, the demolition contractor, we did, we did waive the demolition contractor because we had two bids and neither one of those was believed to be able to meet the threshold, just because of the nature of the, they didn't have the industry-registered apprenticeship program, and that's fairly common for demolition contractors. So that one, we discussed and decided that was going to be waived. The overhead doors was the other one. Sorry, I turned that blue. The overhead doors was the only vendor on that one. That was only marginally over the $50,000 threshold. And we had painting and signage were both under the threshold. We have two that we're still finishing up screening on. All the rest of them qualified. The two we're still finishing up screening on was footings and foundations. We have, they are going to qualify. We just are missing a couple pieces of paper that they're still submitting for us. And the same thing with the glass company. Both are union contractors, so we expect that they will have all of the industry-registered apprenticeship programs. And those are usually key to getting past that 80 points. So we are very comfortable in our subcontract package. And I think we, I think that covers well, what I wanted to say about the responsible bidder ordinance. So it, it worked very well in this case. So it, it worked very well in this case. And I, I'm not, I'm very comfortable with, with how we settled on that, so. Mr. Robinson, did I miss anything that you were expecting us to present?
Oh, I think you covered, uh, you covered the item that we're going to discuss tonight very well, very thoroughly.
Okay. Would you like, I know, uh, our, our project team is here. Would you like to hear from them or is there anything else that council has any questions that you would like me to invite them up?
Okay. I'll see if there's any questions or comments from council members on this. And I know it's on the, uh, agenda for later for the council meeting. Brian?
Thank you. Uh, Patrick, it just seems like we have a ton of contingencies here. Just an overload of contingencies. I mean, is there a reason why you have so many contingencies? I mean, you got, you know, why isn't there just one at the end that says, this is what's going to pick up the, the lack of not having enough for this and that and everything else?
Well, I would say that the, the items, and I think you're referring to the items that were the, besides the subcontract trades, because the only bona fide construction contingency you have here is the four, is the just under $400,000 line item. The other contingencies, so to speak, are then these additional fees by the city. I don't know if I'd go so far as to call those contingencies because we are, we still don't have contracts on all those yet, like the, the fiber, the fiber and data that's coming through here. We haven't solicited proposals yet because typically we don't until we go forward with the award. You're talking about a one-year construction or more. Um, so we, we've got plenty of time to line those things up. The furniture, again, that was a, that was a placeholder number until we sign the contract, we don't know for sure that we're going to come in under 350. What I can tell you is similar to the fire station job, and this is kind of the way we structured it there. And I know we've made requests for an additional federal appropriation for this project and obviously we hope we get that. But at worst case, if there's, any of those contingencies aren't used, that money goes back to the City of Monroe's Capital Projects Fund. The $7.8 million will be spent first. And obviously, as you can see, the, the awarded trade package, you know, alone, the GMP is over 7.8 million. So, um, we will spend all of the 7.8, but anything beyond that, that's, uh, available that's not used goes right back to the city's capital projects fund. So I think, uh, AUC would tell you, it's much better to have the monies in there to protect the job because the last thing we want to do is get 80% done here and say, we're a million dollars short or we're half a million dollars short. So, um, yes, it does, that's why we're very comfortable with our ability to bring this project to you without any additional appropriations. But I owe you, I owe you to present the worst case scenario. I'm sure the city will have other projects that they can allocate this to, should we have that money left over.
Is there any, uh, like for instance, if, if we have leftover funding, do we have to spend it in a certain way or is it just go back to the, you're just saying just back to the capital improvements?
Anything over, as it stands now, without, without the federal appropriation that we did put in for, that hasn't been granted, as it stands right now, everything beyond $7.8 million is the city's money to return back to the city.
To the capital improvements?
To the capital projects fund and the city can, city council can appropriate that however you'd like.
Well, and I think Councilman Lamore, to also, we've had some in the past, within the past year where we would get a bid or an estimation on what things are going to cost. And there were a few times with some major projects in the city where we were absolutely blindsided when the true cost estimate came in from the, uh, from the, the, the construction, people to the people who got, who were the awarded parties. And I think that having that pop us kind of in the face, like, oh my God, how do we get it so wrong with our estimates to where we're so far under, you know? Cause there was a couple of times to a couple of our engineering, uh, companies that I said, well, this was the engineer estimate. I mean, what, you got, you gotta go back to school or something, figure that out? I don't know, but I don't want that happening. So I've instructed, uh, Mr. Lewis, it's like, I always want worst case scenario because I want us to be prepared to pay this much and be very happy when we pay this much. And rather than we're out of money, we need to go ask for more money and be surprised in the, in the negative. So I think that as I'm seeing with this project, I see that, that he's kind of following my guidance in the sense, I want to guess high and let's, let's be ready for high so that, like you said, there's certain points and that when you're in the middle of a project, if all of a sudden there is a, a hiccup where we need the extra money, then okay, well, guess what? That construction job shuts, shuts down for another two weeks until we have another council meeting in order for us to appropriate that money in order to spend it, or at least try to appropriate it. And what happens if council doesn't feel that we should appropriate? Well, then that really throws a wrench into the construction. So I, it's my feeling, especially in the money matters, I'd rather be prepared for the most expensive case scenario and then be able to return that money back for other projects that we might have sitting, you know, when we do our capital improvements, uh, project budget, we go through and we sit down and, and with the planning and all that and we approve certain projects to fit what we're going to work on. But there are many projects that are submitted for that we're like, yeah, that, that's not going to cut it because we, you know, the pot's only so big, but it's a good plan, but it might need to wait a year or that might need to wait another year, you know, et cetera. While if we get returns, especially sizable returns that we might get in a plan such as this, if we were to get back that money, there are some of those plans that may have had to wait or that we could actually reach back and say, well, you know what? Let's do this now. Let's, let's bring this forward because we have the money. Let's take it to council. Let's get approval and, you know, and let's get it done. That's kind of why, when you say the contingencies are, they're high, it's because I've asked them to make it high so that we're not shocked the other way.
And, and it's some of that contingency too would have been, was, was sort of set up before we knew, because keep in mind, two weeks ago, we didn't yet know what the subcontractor bids are going, were going to be. It's very possible. I mean, then there's a couple of placeholders, like for example, the plumbing bid. We had one bid that was 220,000. We had another that was 500,000. If that $220,000 bid doesn't get submitted, that's another 300,000 we would have had to add to this number. So there's, there's, sometimes things are razor's edge about where those numbers come in and until we actually get the bids, planning to have that money sitting there, but that's the important thing to keep in mind. The money that's sitting there allocated for contingencies right now, the city continues to draw interest on that money, which is actually no small deal. And if we don't use it, it comes right back to the city for appropriation because we're over the $7.8 million state allocation. So that's the, and, and I did want to point out too, while, while our project partners are here, um, I think, not to put too fine a point on this, but having AUC brought in onboard early on, which is what we did with the fire station project, is we brought them in before design was completed, allows them to work with our, our very capable design firm, Kohler, to come up with a package that they are highly confident is going to come in where it came in. We were not shocked when the bids came in when, where they did because they've been working so closely together to refine the design, to make sure that we were taking the constructibility aspect of the project into account as they went along. So this model works very, very well on facility jobs and I think that's a big part of the reason that we're here today, uh, and able to do that with, with a high degree of certainty. So I can't advocate strongly enough for, uh, the process. So I just wanted to throw that out there as well.
Yeah, I, I, I agree that I like to always be high rather than low. I have no problem with that. I just, I also know that, uh, a lot of people, especially in the construction industry, like to see money not left on the table. So that, that just, you know, 10% contingency is what we have about right here. Just, it's a little concerning, but, uh, you know, because they know that we have the money. They, they tend to sometimes reach back and dig more out of the pocket. That's the only concerning item I have to this. So that's why I'm concerned about such a high contingency to it. That's, that's, I'm just basically stating that.
No, I understood entirely and that's, uh, that's why I wanted to vouch for that. And with the fire station project, the only times contingency was used in any significant amounts were when the city directed it. Like we did end up adding in like bifold doors, which were a more efficient door that we weren't able to accommodate in the budget, but when we got far enough down the line, we asked that that be used on that line item. So, um, I, I can tell you, I'm, Aaron may want to say the same thing, but that's, their job is to give us money back. And so they're, any, any contingency use will be approved by the city. It's not just going to get spent. They don't have a blank check to spend it. We will, Mr. Robinson and I will have the opportunity to review and approve those costs as they're allocated. So, but I appreciate the concern because I, I, I understand where it's coming from.
So if we get the federal funding that we applied for, does that more money that comes back to us then in the end or is that allocated somewhere else?
I think that's a question that Mr. Cochran would probably be better suited to answer because I'm not exactly sure how mechanically that would work. Yeah, it would displace our funds, but how and why, I don't know.
Yeah, certainly, um, we're waiting on a federal budget to be passed. They keep operating on a continuing resolution set to expire around Christmas time now. And so if they pass a budget and our, um, community project request, they call it now, is included in there. Um, I think, you know, since the beginning of this project, going back to when we did the very first phase analysis, um, the project was much more than just this expansion. Um, and there were other components included in that, um, like the, looking at a place for Joe's Boxing Club and how we, uh, include them in the facility, a revised, a remodeled facility. So if we were to get the $2 million, we would look at both the requirements that come with that grant, um, and how they can be included in the overall project. This, um, this is just the first phase based on the funding that we have available. There are future additions to the building in that campus that, that we're envisioning. And so at that time, we would look at, um, if we get the grant, where are we at in terms of the budget on this existing project? And two, what are the stipulations that come with those federal dollars? What can we use them for and how can we implement them, um, at that campus and at that facility?
Thank you.
Other questions from council or comments? Andrew?
I know that we had some initial flexibility, especially as relates to the subcontractors with our responsible bidding ordinance. I understand why that happened. I hope that it was communicated to the subcontractors who put in proposals that weren't the lowest bidder, that we would still, hey, if you're going to apply on future projects for the City of Monroe, not only is it going to be required by the city, um, but it's going to be required by a lot of other communities in southeast Michigan as well. And so if you'd like to, you know, remain being a municipal contractor in, in this region, you know, this is probably a good thing to have. Um, and I know that I'm, I'm one of several council members up here who own a business and cramming before a project deadline is never a fun thing. Being able to get paperwork, you know, out sort of in the slow season, uh, potentially is a, you know, sort of alleviates the, um, bureaucratic burden on them as well. Not only that, but I think that it has two downstream effects that are going to positively benefit our community just by having them on the list. First of all, it's very transparent about the city's priorities in terms of what we're going to value on our projects. Because as you, as, as you know, the, uh, the points awarded for a, uh, a journeyman program, a, uh, an apprenticeship program is an investment in the human capital of, of the workers of those businesses, many of whom are residents of this community. It's an investment in the people and residents of this community. Um, and second of all, it allows us to build a repertoire of, uh, of subcontractors who are qualified to do the work. And if it, there's, there's only a couple of subcontractors that do a particular trade and we can point out, oh, these are already qualified and we could give those to a general contractor as they come in the door. In the first couple of years of this project, we might not have that as a resource to be able to provide them. But as we begin to build that list, uh, I think that these projects will become easier and we'll know who's capable of doing the work that we're asking to be done. So I, I, I hope that was communicated to them, um, so that we can start building that list and, and we hope to hear from them in the future. Um, and I understand for some of the trades that perhaps are not getting the points for an apprenticeship program, you know, given the, you know, the industry that they're working in. So I don't know how that process worked out, um, but I, I understand that at this point, you know, the vast majority of them do meet the qualification they have all been screened.
Yeah. I, I, I don't know if it was communicated to, it was communicated at the pre-bid meeting that that was going to be required of all the low bidders or anyone else considered for award. There were a few more that were screened that were not awarded to because they were either second low with an alternate or something like that. So I can't say for sure that everyone was communicated with, with the other bidders, but it gives us an idea of, of, uh, you know, certainly the, the awarded trades are, are ones that we can put on the list and, and go forward on that process. It's not as daunting as, as I think some of them felt it would be. So it's, I mean, I've had some really good submittals that were 10 or 12 pages that are easy to look through. They know where it's all organized. So I, I, I think it, it worked well. And I will take your, take your comments and potentially reach out to those other low bidders that weren't, you know, that weren't necessarily awarded on this one, uh, as certainly I expect we'll have some future facility work too.
Because we want them, we want more contractors bidding on city work. We want as many competitive bids as we can get, but we want the people who are making those bids to be qualified to do so.
And we did have a lot of bidders this time that, that AUC solicited on other projects of their, of, that they were, had been the GC on. And I think that helped too, because we got people that otherwise might not have ventured into the unknown of the City of Monroe. I don't know what it's like working in Monroe. I won't take a chance. It's a long ways away. But the relationship that they have with AUC on other projects compelled them to bid on these projects. So that's, that's helpful for us anytime we can get some fresh, uh, fresh bidders that we're not used to seeing. So I think the process regardless was beneficial all the way around.
As we talk about AUC in the third person behind their back as they're sitting right in front of us, I, I hope that they know that we appreciate them being here and our continued partnership on projects in the city. Obviously we have a working relationship, uh, with your firm in the past and, uh, and, and that project came out to be, I think, on time and under budget. So I mean, we obviously have a, uh, you know, a history of, of working and, and producing good things for the residents of the City of Monroe together. So we just want to make sure that you know that we appreciate you being here.
Well, if I may, Councilman Felder, as you brought up, and you're aware that there are certain trades that aren't going to have the apprentice program, et cetera, or certain segments of certain details of trades that, where they're subcontracting, where they're not going to have that. And I think that's good because we always do bring to you and get approved through council when we make a waiver from that. Because there are times we also have to look at that sometimes when contractors are also scarce, and I understand your, your, your discussion about us building up a, a nice repertoire and a nice, a nice list of contractors, but we also have to be cognizant that there will be some contractors who won't bid because they don't think that, that, that's why we have to allow that waiver at certain points because we could be missing or limiting the number of subcontractors that would bid for a job. And I think that that's what, and it's good that we've, we've worked out in our ordinance to where when there is an occasion where this has to happen, that we always bring it before council and council approves those waivers. And I think that, you know, as we see, we will run into those because, you know, the responsible bidder ordinance is not a one size fits all. It's a great guidance. It's a great requirement. It's a good ordinance, but there are times when there's extenuating circumstances or there's information about a certain trade or there are certain trades that just simply don't have those kind of programs in that trade that are people we have to use. And it's great that you've been, uh, the council has been welcoming when we bring the information forward and let you know, well, listen, we are going to use the waiver of this on this one or re-score the sheets, eliminating this question out of the bidder so that we can actually get someone to reach the 80% mark of our ordinance. And I think that we always discuss that with you ahead of time and I think, I appreciate that. The other thing is I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, I don't know if you all were able to see in the packet, but there is a project timeline that was included within the packet. And I don't know if any of you have any questions. I think that this is great. Um, the timeline obviously is just like any other construction timeline. It's all kinda, we're going to be there kinda then and, you know, but it's good to know how these things work and that I know that our website is prepared. We work with the communications department and economic development department. They've all worked together to be able to have regular updates on our city website of the project so that everybody can, can know what's coming and when it's coming to the, you know, give or take a day or a week here or there when, you know, whether it's weather or, or whatever that affects it. And if, and you guys have any questions about the timeline that you would like to ask our, our, our AUC or, or our, our architects? Just feel free.
That's what I have in my hand right here. So I appreciate the timeline. I think it's beneficial for the council, the residents, those are, you know, watching I think it's beneficial for the council, the residents, those are watching the project to see how it progresses. And I really understand how things flow because it's not probably many people's expertise other than we can read a spreadsheet and we can read, so to speak, a timeline. And it really kind of lays out the process and why that goes through this. I'll say what comes next, so to speak, and if something is delayed, why it impacts maybe the next item. But I get, it really gives a good view of the overall project, understanding where we're starting and we've already started as you look through it and getting through the bidding process now and when it's proposed, looking at the final date, which is January 30th of 2026. So it's a year-long project. Really, you always watch these, you watch these and upfront, it goes down quickly and then as you hit a certain point, it goes way out all the way because that's where all the work is done. The others are getting procedural things that we're talking about here tonight. So I guess as I look at this, I know we've had these before. They work very well. We've had them in a couple of different projects when you get to this magnitude of a project. There may be opportunities and where council hears back on a potential, I'll say, moving forward quicker as a possibility, of course, something, one item that may be delayed because of logistics and materials and how that impacts what follows after it. So I think I look at this and say, just looking forward if there's reviews with the council, just to keep updated. I know we've done that in the past, but I really appreciate this. This is something that'll sit on the desk because as we move forward, because it really helps us, because people call. They call the manager, they call council members. And if you have this, you can say, I can tell you this is where we're at in the process unless we hear something different as an update from, to the council from administration. So.
And we'll continue to do that because I'm sure we'll have bi-weekly progress meetings like we did in the fire station project. And I think the schedule's typically adjusted. So we will, we can forward that schedule to council on a bi-weekly basis. We're happy to do it because I think that's something you're really going to be interested in too. So I don't know, Mayor, if there's anything else, if anyone had any questions on schedules, I will defer to Jeremy and Aaron, but.
I don't think it's a bi-weekly because things could change that quickly to turn, return back that way. I look at this, you know, almost like quarterly and, you know, and that's just probably not much to look at the first quarter, but it may be things as you get in, you know, the weather, all these impacts that occur. It's just nice to know that so we can share that with the public as it continues to move along that we're on track or we have an estimate, estimated timeframe that may impact it, whatever that's for. That's the reality sometimes. It's not that it makes it wrong. It just makes the fact we all can be on the same page as we move forward. Thank you. Other questions from council members? I think we're good. I want to thank everybody for being here tonight for both topics on the work session. And thank you for presenting, Patrick.
Certainly. If there's no, if you do not feel necessary, I will probably release AUC to head back home unless you feel that you would like them to stick around through the regular meeting if you had any other questions.
I would think that if they had some questions, we'd want to hear them now and we'll look forward through the presentation, council action in about a half hour or so.
Right. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thanks, Patrick.
Before we close out.
Yes, Andrew.
Have we reviewed how library services will be affected during this period? They're going to be closed at Navarre, is that?
Yes, and I think, I know the library usually figures out the process of what they're going to do, then they come back and propose to us so we see what can be done. I see Mr. Cochran said yes. I'm sure we'll get an update on that as it gets closer for the disruption that'll occur when you have activities. Obviously, we still want to have library services with our community and where and how that is, I don't have that answer right now, but I'm sure we'll get it soon, if not later.
And potentially the same question for the ALCC opportunities.
Absolutely. They both have impacts and, you know, we just had our presentation earlier was about all the great activities that are going on at the YMCA externally, but also externally through the MCOP at the Art Loza Community Center. And we can, we can expect there'll be some, but where, how do we find the space to continue those activities that is not a disruption to the community, I think, is what I know the administrations had contact with the library system on that and how, what they, what they're making some proposals. I'm sure they'll be presenting that soon. I haven't heard. Thanks. Anything further?
I have no further items for the work session.
Mr. Robinson, okay. There's nothing further. Clerk LeWoy, anything less that you have? Okay, then we'll, at this time, we'll close the work session and be back at 7:30 for the city council meeting. Thank you all for being here.
Call the City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine?
You.
Lemoore?
Present.
Felder?
You.
Hayder?
Stillgrave?
Here.
Vining?
Excuse me.
Mayor Clark?
Present. I would ask that we all please rise for the invocation from me standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Guide us in our deliberations and discussions this evening. May our efforts promote the good of the residents of this city and all who visit.
Our Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One second. I have to find my agendas. There we go. The next item is the approval of the regular agenda.
City Manager Robinson, any amendments or adjustments on the agenda from the administration?
Your Honor and Counsel, I have no amendments to the regular agenda this evening.
Thank you. Any items from Counsel looking to amend? If not, a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Lemoore, supported by Councilwoman Stillgrave to approve the regular agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Stillgrave?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item is the consent agenda. And for item B, approval of payments to vendors, the amount should read $1,911,707.11. 1-9-1-1-707.11.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that Counsel wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Items on the consent agenda, the two items. None? Are there any items on the consent agenda those present here this evening wish to have pulled for further discussion? Items on the consent agenda. Seeing none? Motion? Councilman Felder.
Yes, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, resolutions adopted.
Motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilwoman Lemoore, that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, resolutions adopted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Stillgrave?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item is under Presentations, Communications, and Public Hearings. It's item 4958, the Opportunity Center at ALCC 2024, Fourth Quarterly Report.
Thank you. We have that communication. Manager Robinson, any comments?
Yes, Your Honor. As you see attached to your packet, was there 2024, their quarterly report for the fourth quarter of 2024? And I think what their presentation that they gave in the work session was pretty solid in their explanation of what they've accomplished, which has been amazing. And there is another item on the MCO. It's kind of MCOP night here. There is another thing about their lease that'll be coming up later in the agenda. But Stephanie is here if you have any questions on the fourth quarter report. Stephanie, did you have anything else you wanted to report? Okay. So I can serve as a communication.
Well, thank you for being here. And also, those that may have not have been here for the work session, opportunity to view and watch and see all the activities that were going on from the, at the MCOP, at the ALCC, as well as we also had our other external partner through the YMCA. So I appreciate the communication with the quarter report. I always think it's very easy to read. It tells us pretty clear to understand. And appreciate the way in which it's presented. If there's no comments or questions from Counsel, I don't, do we need action? Is it just accepting? I think we just accept, right? It's communication being accepted. Is that correct? Mr. Buds?
Your Honor, I believe that's been the way we've typically handled it. It's a communication for informational purposes and is on the agenda for that reason.
And otherwise, there'd be other action. Okay. Clerk, next item, please.
The next action, I mean, the next item is item 4953, Public Hearing, Industrial Facilities Exemption Certificate, 1625 Rose Street.
Thank you. Manager Robinson, any comments for the public hearing?
I have no comments before the public hearing.
Okay. Okay, at this time, I'll open the public hearing for item 4953, Industrial Facilities Exemption Certificate for 1625 Rose Street. Any comments from those present here this evening regarding this public hearing? Yes, sir. Please step forward, state your name.
Good evening. I'm Jack Clark. I'm the plant manager at the Monroe Facility of Advanced Heat Treat, representing our organization. Thank you for your time. Just wanted to come forward and just kind of give a brief overview of what we're looking at, short term and long term, with this proposal. We're a commercial heat treater here in the Rust Belt, trying to become a, you know, grow even in larger. Currently, we have about 22,000 square foot. We're looking to add 6,000 square foot with a $1.52 million investment. In addition to that, we are also looking at $1.5 to $2 million in additional equipment, which will bring anywhere from two to six jobs, additional jobs in the Monroe area. Trying to keep everything here local. We expand out tri-state area, Canada. I mean, we bring parts in from California, Washington State. So a lot of different parts coming from a lot of different areas of the country to Monroe. And we want to keep that and continue to grow our business. So we're a small family-owned business, so anything that we can get to help us continue to grow would be greatly appreciated. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Other public comments? I'm just going to add a comment because I know that for, on this request, the Economic Development Review Committee did meet and discuss this and is recommending the application. So I'll just add that. Other comments regarding the public hearing? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item 4954, Industrial Facilities Exemption Certificate for 1625 Rose Street.
Thank you. Manager Robinson, anything further?
Yes, Your Honor. As you spoke, on October 14th, the Economic Development Review Committee sat down and we looked at their request. And we are, the, they are recommending to Counsel that we adopt the attached resolution approved, approving their exemption certificate from advanced heat treatment at 625, which is basically a tax, an exemption on their expansion for 12 years based on an investment of $3.6 million in both real and personal property investment yielding 6,000 square foot of expansion.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from Counsel? Councilman Felder.
Your Honor, I do sit on the EDRC, and we reviewed this item and made the recommendation to Counsel for acceptance of this facility's exemption. I mean, part of the reason why we're making these tax abatements is to acknowledge the investment that businesses are making in our community who are trying to stay here, stay local, and clean up the rusty part of the Rust Belt. That takes a lot of work, takes a lot of investment. And there's an acknowledgement on the city's part that we need to incentivize that and try and keep, you know, the city productive and use all property the highest and best use that it's able. So I appreciate Advanced Heat Treat making the investment in our community to try and keep things here in Monroe. So.
Thank you. Other comments? If not, this item is up for Council action. Oh, Councilwoman Lemoore?
Yeah, make a motion. To adopt the attached resolution approving the industrial facilities exemption certificate for 1625 Rose Street for a period of 12 years.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Lemoore, supported by Councilman Felder on item 4954, Industrial Facilities Exemption Certificate for 1625 Rose Street. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Stillgrave?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item is item 4961, amended MCOP lease and funding agreements for the ALCC.
Thank you. Manager Robinson?
Yes, Your Honor and Counsel. As we have discussed earlier in our work session, this is seeking your approval of the guaranteed maximum price. As we discussed, I'm unsure if you have any more questions or you would like Mr. Lewis to come up and present any basics for the sake of the rest of the community on this item.
Thank you. Any questions from Counsel for the City Manager or additional information that you're seeking? Councilman Felder?
Point of clarification, we are on item 4961.
That's correct.
Okay.
The amendment for the MCOP lease and funding agreement at the ALCC.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, as, Councilwoman Germaine?
I was going to make a motion.
Okay. Sure. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion, amended MCOP lease and funding agreements for the ALCC, move to extend the agreements with MCOP for another three years, beginning October 1st, 2024, and ending September 30th, 2027, with a slight increase in funding to reflect a recent increase in utility costs from $207,000 to $219,000, and that the mayor and clerk treasurer be authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Motion by Councilwoman Germaine, supported by Councilwoman Stillgrave on item 4961, amended MCOP lease and funding agreements for the ALCC. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item is item 4917, bid award 2025 Water Main Replacement, Maps 1 and 3.
Thank you. Manager Robinson, comments on this, please?
On this, I would like to invite Mr. Lewis to the podium again to discuss the, the details of this. And I must apologize for the last agenda item.
Yeah.
I, I read 4916 instead of 4961.
That's okay.
Just happens. Sorry.
I think that if somebody else was going to get up to make a presentation, that Mr. Cochran or yourself would have done it. We understood. Thank you.
I'd be late to the podium like I was at the work session, so.
We were just going to call you up with something else.
I was ready to come up for this one, so.
Very good.
Honorable Mayor and Council Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering and Public Services. I'm really happy to report the bid results on this one. We are, as you know, the water department will be participating in a bond issue here around January, I think is when we're going to issue that. And they're doing approximately 12 miles in total of water main, mostly in the township areas, in, in areas kind of, I'll say, the older part of the system, South Monroe Town Site, Patterson Gardens subdivision, that area. But we also have some areas that are farther out, that are prone to some main breaks that are about 40 years old, that we're, we're looking to address those high break areas. So we've, on this one, we decided it was going to be, as the designs came in, we would split the water mains into multiple packages. You actually approved the first of these packages back in June. We accelerated the work that's going on right now on Keegan Road near Albin, and that works nearing completion. So because of that, we actually took advantage, we were able to take advantage of some pretty good scheduling availability by the low bidder here. This package includes, we'll call them Maps 1 and 3, there's actually five maps. That's the way we sort of organize the five geographic locations. So we've, we've split these packages up to between four and five million apiece. It was our estimate. And so we had the first of those ready. We advertised that one and opened bids a week ago. We turned around immediately and advertised the next package. So at the next council meeting, you'll be, or I'm sorry, at the council meeting in mid-November, you'll be seeing Map 4. And then at the first meeting in December, you'll be seeing Map 5. So I'm going to be coming at you pretty hard with these awards. I really couldn't believe the bid pricing on this one, but we have a contractor that's very capable and they stand behind their numbers. And so I'm certainly not going to argue that the bid price was over a million and a half dollars below our estimate, and that we are recommending the first of these, which, Map 1 includes Strasburg and Dunbar Roads, that, so that's more of a rural piece. And then there's the, the one part of this that actually touches the city, and that is Coal Road, a piece of Coal Road, and the northernmost reach of Hollywood and Arbor. So basically Hollywood and Arbor from Oakwood, Oakwood North on Hollywood and Orchard North on Arbor will both be part of this contract. I will be coming to you with this year's CIP with a request to resurface Arbor Avenue. Once we get done putting the water main down there in conjunction with the surface condition it is now, we're going to need to resurface the street, so. But I'm happy to report that the low bidder on this one was Saloon Bean Trucking and Excavating with a low bid amount of $2,494,944. And we're asking for an encumbrance of $2.87 million to include that 15% contingency. We usually stick with 15% on underground work, as opposed to sometimes on 10% on a roadway job. So our estimate was over $4 million. And as I've reported before, Saloon Bean Trucking and Excavating has met our responsible bidder threshold. They've renewed again, and, and we're fine with that. They had one subcontractor, that was S&amp;S Directional Drilling. They, they actually haven't selected an asphalt subcontractor yet. That one might be over $50,000, but they know they have to get a responsible bidder. Since the asphalt work isn't going to occur until the spring, I think they're just going to look at availability at that time. But they've, they've used Gurkin in the past, and Gurkin has met our responsible bidder ordinance as well. So more than happy to report this one to you and recommend a word to Saloon Bean Trucking and Excavating. And we'll see where the bid numbers come back on the next grouping, because there was about a million dollar spread between them and the second low bidder. So be interesting to see the games they'll play, trying to see if they raise their bid or if the second low bidder is going to try to sharpen their pencil. So that's our recommendation this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Lewis?
Good job on this one, Pat.
I can't, I can't take all the credit. I think we hit a nice window in Saloon Bean's schedule where they needed the work lined up for the early part of the winter. So whatever the reason, we'll take it. So, but thank you.
Let's make a quick comment regarding the process here. Of course, as we do with our capital improvements for the 2425 capital improvements, you know, did have received affirmative approval through the Citizens Planning Commission and also then to the city council came earlier for, through that process. So just, I say that because our boards and commissions are active and they're involved in items that come to council. And when people see us pass a, through a conversation here of 2.4 million plus dollars, I understand it's meant through many, many views. And, and we're thankful that that's lower than what our estimate is, but at the same time, we have many people looking at it. So thank, always thank the residents that serve on our boards and commissions. With that, this is an action. I'm up for comments. Councilman Lomore?
Motion that a contract for the Water Main Replacement 2025 Improvements, Maps 1 and 3 Project be awarded to Saloon Bean Trucking and Excavating Incorporated, the amount of $2,494,944. That a total of $2,870,000 be encumbered to include a 15% contingency. That the mayor and city clerk treasurer be authorized to execute the contracts on behalf of the city, and that the director of finance slash assistant city manager be authorized to make any necessary transfers, including advancing funding from water fund reserves until bond proceeds are available.
Motion by Councilwoman Morse, supported by Councilwoman Stillgrave, on item 4917, the bid award for 2025 Water Main Replacement, Maps 1 and 3. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Jermaine?
Yes.
Lomore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Stillgrave?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item is item 4916, approval, approval of guaranteed maximum price Opportunity Center and Navar Library.
Thank you. Manager Robinson, I know we had a work session on our review, but for those that are here.
Not going to mess up and say all the great things about MCOP in this one.
Okay.
No, again, we are asking that you are willing to approve the guaranteed maximum price in the amount of $7,951,000 with George W. Ock Company for the expansion and renovation of the Opportunity Center at ALCC and Navar Library.
Any questions or comments from council? I know that we had a lengthy discussion during the work session. Again, if you hadn't, weren't able to be here or, or view it earlier, I'd make comment to those that go back and see it, because it really talked through the process of, of the work that needs to be done, all the contracts that are going to be let regarding this, that this year allows us to hire the Ock Company to make sure that we have the guaranteed maximum price. So if there's, their obligation to come in at or under, of course, what that is. But they also, one of the things we talked about as well is the timeline. If you want to know when the project starts, when it ends, what parts are being done when, I think it really helps people understand why this project will take a while. But at the same time, the progress is being made along the way. And that's available in the packet for anybody to seek out themselves through the clerk's office as well. With that, is there any comments from council?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Councilwoman Stillgrave, you want to read it?
Move to approve the attached guaranteed maximum price in the amount of $7,951,000 with the George W. Ock Company for the expansion and renovation project with the Opportunity Center at ALCC and Navar Library. That the mayor and clerk treasurer be authorized to sign any necessary documents, including the GMP contract, subject to final review by the city attorney and city manager, and that the finance director be authorized to make any necessary transfers, including up to $170,000 of the capital project fund reserves if needed.
Motion by Councilwoman Stillgrave, supported by Councilwoman Jermaine, on item 4616, 4916, approval of the guaranteed maximum price Opportunity Center and Navar Library. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Jermaine?
Yes.
Lomore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Stillgrave?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. No further comments. It's, council comments is next. This is October. Councilwoman Jermaine?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm thanking Mark Cochran because I had the pleasure of going through St. Mary's Academy last Thursday, and I couldn't believe the integrity of the construction of that building that still stands and the beauty that's still there. And I'm so excited about the project that's coming in the future. It was amazing to go through from top to bottom, and I'm really sore from walking up to all those doors. Oh, my goodness. And also, trick or treat is next week, and please be careful of little goblins that are out in the streets. Slow down and watch for the kids. That's all. Thank you.
Councilman Lomore?
Thank you, Your Honor. Trick or treat actually is this Saturday as well, I believe, downtown. And I want to say it's at noon, it starts at noon. And we typically have well over 1,000 participants, kids coming through and getting some treats downtown. So I think all the downtown businesses look forward to that coming through. I also want to thank the company that came in and, and got the abatement tonight, because it's just showing that the city of Monroe wants people to grow. And, and we look forward to your coming to us and asking, that was, that's fantastic. So your growth means that Monroe grows. So we, we want to be hand in hand with all the businesses in Monroe. And if you're seeking help, that's a great way of doing it. So thank you for coming forward and, and bringing that to us to, to, to help you out, because I think that's just a great, great thought and great aspect of how this is supposed to work as a community. So thank you again. And I just wanted to go back on, on record as, on the contingencies. I know I kind of hit this a little bit hard in our work session, but the only thing I worry about when we have such a large contingency is that the, the builder also sees, the builders also see that, and, and sometimes they can take advantage of that. So I, I'm, I'm well aware that we need to keep our, our prices in, in reality and, and, you know, rather be high than low. I agree with you 100%, but sometimes I think maybe our contingencies might be just a little bit set a little high, and those builders want to take whatever is left on the table rather than kind of understand that they need to work for it. So that's my, that's my one concern with that. But obviously, I approved of it, and, and I, I look forward to the project going through, and I don't want to be the, the person that's going to hold that up. And I think it's a wonderful project, and I think we just need to get it moving, so. But I just wanted to make, make that clarity on, on my statement. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Felder?
Thank you, Your Honor. Looking forward to the Downtown Monroe Business Network Trick or Treat, as well as the Monroe County Community College Concert that is tonight. The band and choir are performing. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Stillgrave?
I have a couple of things, Your Honor. Well, I'm excited that we are on the road to this expansion and renovation for the Opportunity Center. I'm looking forward to that. It's going to be a pretty big deal when we're done. This weekend also is Booze and Booze downtown Monroe, from 5:00 to 11:00. Starts at Amaya's and goes all the way down to Beeks and that, I believe. And they're having a Halloween costume, too. And then also, something new, it's Nomadic Nights. It's going to be in St. Mary's Park, and they're going to have food trucks and vendors. It's kind of a pop-up thing, so I think it's going to be a pretty cool event. So those are what's happening this weekend. That's all I have.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. First, I want to thank Chad Clark for coming this evening from Advanced Heat Treat Corporation, and think about the partnership that we've had and how we continue to make this grow, as not just the square footage, but of course, with the, the work employment and the future what it is. So I need that. So my next one, because I want to take this because it was discussed but didn't get added. My first one, because we won't have another meeting until into November, but I wanted to announce that the MCOP has their Walk for Warmth on November 2nd, which is a Saturday. It's at 10:00 a.m., and it'll be at the Opportunity Center at the ALCC. That's where the walk will start. So I know it's a little bit down the count a little bit, but we won't have the chance to announce it here through at least the, the city council. But again, that's on Saturday, November 2nd, at 10:00 a.m. at the Opportunity Center at ALCC. Also, the Monroe Community Health Department Authority posted that this week here, actually Wednesday, the Monroe Community Mental Health Authority is having their, having a town hall, a meeting, and it's again on the 23rd, from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Monroe Community Mental Health Authority location located at 100 South Reasonville Road. And so I want to make those announcements, because when you have a town hall, the opportunity for people to come and speak on a topic that we've, you know, had many conversations over the last years, and how we are addressing that. And it's good to, for people to go there and have conversation and listen to others as well. So, and, you know, as I saw, be productive in our conversation of how we handle the circumstances within our community, and that community is, of course, countywide. So thank you, Councilwoman. That's all my comments for this evening. Clerk Treasurer Lavoy?
I have a few. It's election time.
Things coming up?
Yes, things coming up. So it is still not too late to get your absentee ballot. So for those here in the audience and those listening at home, if you don't have it or if you requested one and it hasn't arrived in the mail, please, please, please contact our office. Time is growing short to actually mail it and get it back to us via mail. The post offices, US, US Post Office is doing a great job, but it is a lot of mail to move, especially with all of the campaign literature that's on top of the election mail. So just really urge you to, don't wait. Contact us as soon as possible if you still need your ballot. If you're planning to come down to the city for some of these really great events that are happening on Saturday, then I encourage you to come to early voting first on Saturday. Early voting is at City Hall from 8:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. And we're actually going to do a ready, set, vote kickoff weekend. And if it's successful, we'll do it again the following weekend. But we just encourage you to come down. Voting in the, the early voting precinct is much like voting at your precinct on Election Day, except probably without the long lines. And I say probably because I think we'll be a little busier this time than, than we have been, but it will still be much more expedient than on, on Election Day. We are expecting long lines on Election Day, so I just urge you to really think about your time and your availability to stand in line on Election Day. We certainly don't want anyone to miss out on voting because they, they had to leave the line on Election Day. So please take advantage of early voting or absentee voting. It's a long ballot, and there are a lot of people that want to vote, and I think November 5th will be very, very busy. Taxes, just a little farther down the road, taxes will be coming out the first weekend of December for the city of Monroe. So keep that in mind, and I, I think that's it for this evening.
Very good. Thank you. City Manager Robinson, comments this evening?
Just a reminder for the council members, on November 4th, there will be no work session. That's our next city council meeting, and usually we do not have a work session because it's the day before Election Day. And I know our city clerk is a little busy, and we want to be prepared for that. The rest of my comments, I am going to let Director Cochran come up as we have some good news on grants, so I want him to be the one to deliver.
Well, thank you.
Lomore?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, Mark Cochran, Director of Economic and Community Development, Assistant City Manager. We've had a terrific news day today in terms of funding coming to the city of Monroe for new infrastructure projects. This afternoon, we were notified that $196,125,000 in funding is coming to the city. 125 of that is coming from MDOT through their Shared Streets and Spaces Grant, through the Office of Future Mobility and Electrification. Mayor, you talked about the value of our citizens who serves on board and commissions. And previously, once this grant was announced, we took it to the Trail Advisory Committee and asked them what projects we should apply for, working with Director Lewis through Matt Vanasacker. And Matt and Caitlin put together an application for what they identified as a priority, which was the installation of sidewalks to fill the gaps where there are no sidewalks on East 1st Street and Jerome Street. And so we were notified of $125,000 that was awarded to the city today for that project. The other 196 million comes from the US Department of Transportation and MDOT through the bipartisan infrastructure law for the Infrastructure for Rebuilding America program. This is to replace the bridge and construct the I-75 project that the city has been advocating for and working hard on for the past seven years. This, as council recalls, we've been working with OHM Advisors, MDOT, our lobbyist, Pat Harrington, to get this project moved forward and also moved up. And so fair warning, in 2028, this project is now scheduled to start, which will call for the complete replacement of the I-75 bridge over the river, replacing two miles of surface infrastructure on I-75 through the city, the rebuilding of six structures. through the city, the rebuilding of six structures, including two bridges, and the interchange improvements that the city has been working with MDOT on for safety and improvement and access to both the city and the port. Thanks to the support of all of our partners, I wanna say, too, through Mayor, the city manager, and myself, and Patrick Lewis, and working with MDOT leadership, $5 million was included in that grant to address the local road impact that will come as a result of the, the infrastructure improvements, particularly on Dixie Highway and the industrial park leading to Elm Avenue, so. MDOT was, we went through extensive negotiations with them as part of this application, and the city's support are, for the grant, but also the grant was supported by our partners at the Port of Monroe, the National Park Service, DTE, SimCog, and the laborers' union as well, sent letters of support for this project, so, good day for the city.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Another one?
No, is there another one?
No, there's not.
Oh. No, that's all.
No, it's just great work, of course, we, there's good news that came in today, because it's long-term planning, and as you said, 2028 on the bridge, you know, the sidewalks will come sooner, but it's still, it, it takes the time to put those applications together, and some aren't that easy, so.
Yes, Mayor, if I may, I was remiss to, the city did support another application through the US Department of Transportation for the big bridge project through US DOT, and they're still waiting onward for that. These funds cover a total of 60% of that project. If we hear about that grant, which represents about another $60 million, that will help satisfy the state's match requirement to carry the project across the finish line, although MDOT has already committed about 65 million toward the project.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you much. Mr. Robinson, anything further?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, next is citizens' comments, if there's comments from those present here this evening, just please come forward, state your name, jurisdiction of residence, and mindful of the three minutes. I see that our state representative, William Bruck, arrived. Representative, comments this evening? 'Cause I know that you are also in communication regarding the, the I-75 bridge and that construction, so, but we have a gentleman walking up, and we'll see if he has something to say afterwards.
I mean, take your thunder, my brother. First of all, Aaron Lavender, 428 Elmira, Honorable Mayor, City, City Manager, and City Clerk, and City Council. I wanna first thank you. I wanna thank you for voting and approving the Opportunity and Library project, but it's more than just a project, it's an investment. It's an investment in the future of our children, our senior citizens, and the people of the city. I'm a product of the center, and I would not be standing before you if it wasn't for the people at the Opportunity Center. Back then, it was called the center, everybody knew it as the center. And when MCOOP took over, I was the chair of the ALCC during that transition, and it was the best decision you made. And I say that humbly, and I say that because of the resources. It's called the Opportunity Center for a reason, because it gives opportunities to those that wouldn't have the opportunity to do the things that we do at the Opportunity Center. And I'm truly grateful, and I'm blessed to be in front of you, to say thank you. And I also wanna give a big shout out to, to Mark Cochran, who has been working effortlessly, and he's on the, the advisory board with me, along with Michelle, at the Opportunity Center. And to, to back up, when it first took, when this first project came to, to be, this investment, I should say, I know that I was, I was in the room when it first started, and I knew the boxing program to be in total transparency, was a part of that, was a part of that being what it is, and receiving the funding from Representative Zorn and Bellino, and shout out to my, my business partner, Stephanie Casperzak, they were a part of that, making that happen. I don't know what happened in the translation, or what, what, what went on, but I always see the bigger picture, I always see the bigger picture, and this investment is far bigger than anything I could ever imagine as a child. And I hope, and I was, I was really excited to hear that it may still be on life support, the boxing gym, hopefully, if there's more funding available for it, I hope you guys will consider it, it is very, very important to our community. We have world champions that came out of that little, small space, and our motto is building champions in the ring and outside of the ring, and we have done that, and I really hope that you guys really consider that moving forward, if there is any more funding, because that was a part of the initial investment in our people, in our community. So again, I wanna thank you, again, this is an honor, and I'm just overjoyed with excitement inside, I wanna scream, because I know what this is gonna do for the future. It's gonna be here a lot longer than we are alive, and that is something to be said. We cannot underestimate, marginalize, or put aside how important this is for the future, and that's what this investment is, is for the future. So I just wanna say thank you again.
Thank you, Aaron. Just a follow-up, you know, Aaron talks about the, you know, the partnerships obviously are there, and how we've worked through this, and, and also, we talked about bridges here about being built, but there's other bridges that are being built within our community, and this comes out of the Opportunity Center at the ALCC, and the fact that that partnership from the Opportunity Center and the, the residents and support within the Arthur Leslow Community Center group have unified and formed to, to make our community even better, so I might thank you to both of you. Other comments from those present here this evening? Representative Bruck, thank you for being here this evening, any comments?
Well, I didn't come, I, I didn't come dressed up to speak or put on my makeup, so I apologize for that, sir. It's good to be here, Mayor and Council, had a great event at the Faith in Blue, so give a lot of kudos to MCOOP and Arthur Leslow Center and all the employees and volunteers, that was a great event. Good news, Mark, on the bridge, speaking of building bridges, and multiple meetings with MDOT, as you know, and on the, on the backside, we've been meeting with MDOT and, on various issues, too, even stop signs down in Erie and things, you know, MDOT, we have a good relationship, or I should say, I have a good relation with MDOT, but goal is just to be available for you folks, so if there's ever anything you need, please reach out. I'm here, you should be able to find me somewhere, hopefully, but...
I appreciate you being here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As Representative said, you know, his engagement, he was, as he walked in, we were talking, I go, and there's another person that was involved, and, you know, and having, working at, at the Lansing level and having conversations with MDOT, was all productive, and came down to the wire, but we were able to get the, the agreement submitted, along with recommendations from the city, and knowing that we're getting to that consideration for the local road that needs as we have a project like this. Other comments from those present here this evening? Additional comments from those present? There's no further comments. Before we adjourn, Clerk Lavoy, I know that we have a, just for awareness, so we have a meeting this evening after this, it's an open public meeting, maybe you wanna talk about the accuracy test, what that is?
Sure, we have an election commission meeting this evening in order to complete the public accuracy testing, which tests the programming of the, of what will be used on Election Day to count the ballots, it's required by state law, and so we need to get that done this evening. We'll call that meeting to order at 8:30, it is a public meeting, so anyone who wishes to is welcome to stay and view it, and if you have any questions, what, basically what it'll entail is, the election commission will pick one of the precincts, and we will process a test deck through the tabulator and check that against the key for the test deck, and make sure that everything was counted the way it was supposed to. We've already done pre-accuracy testing on all of the precincts, that happens with the team from the clerk treasurer's office, so that everything came out fine, so tonight's test should be the same. And the, the cards are sealed, the programming is sealed in the tabulator immediately following the pre-accuracy tests, so that's another thing that will be checked to ensure that there is, the chain of custody has not been disturbed, and that the same cards that were sealed by the team from the clerk's office remain sealed through today, and then they will remain sealed through election, up till election night, when we need to use those cards to modem the results up to the county and then the state. So we check all that, we check the seals, we check the serial number of the tabulator, and we check the programming here tonight. So thank you for the, to the election commission for hanging with us a little bit longer, and we'll get that done.
Thank you. If there's any other comments, if not, then we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilman Lomore, supported by Councilman Felder to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine.
Yes.
Lomore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Thank you all for being here.